Well, we now have a quorum. Thank you for coming. So let me call the roll call since our secretary is not here either. Sharon Tucker?
Present.
Marty Seifer?
Present.
Jim Williams?
Present.
Ben Eisbart? That's a quorum. So I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as distributed.
So move.
And a second? Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. If no one objects, I'd like to blend all the minutes together in one motion. The motion would read, the approval of the minutes of the regular session, excuse me, of January 25th, 2024, minutes of the executive session of the same date, the minutes of the Board of Finance meeting, January 25th, '24, and the minutes of the Capital Projects Committee Executive Session, February 2nd, 2024, and the approval of claim minutes of February 12th, 2024. May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. David, the financial report.
Thank you, Ben. This is the financial report for January, which is my favorite one to always give because nothing is happening. All lines are in good shape. There are nobody overspending and really just the news items are, we're working on the filings that take place at the beginning of the year. Certain ones had happened on January 31st, others on the end of February. We're finishing those up. And then we'll be starting in on getting all of the, you know, annual cap comprehensive financial report items done for the auditors. And right now, we're still on slated for a April 15th start of our, right around April 15th, start of our audit for this year, for the 23 years. So really, that's the only thing to report. I'll talk a little later on the presentation, but that's all I have.
Thank you. David, can we have a motion to accept the abbreviated?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. All right, now the claims.
Yep.
The good stuff.
Yep, the claims for today. And not a large claim register for today. In fact, the highest check is $61,000. That's for insurance premiums for our benefits. Then the system-wide electrical service is the next highest at $44,000. But, you know, nothing really outstanding on this one.
Sounds good to me. May we have a motion and a second?
Move. So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It's coming around. We need, as a matter of course, to approve the closure of Staff Development Day. This year, it's October 1st. You want to tell us a bit about it?
Yes, thank you, Ben. So as you know, each year, we have traditionally closed to the public one day for an all-staff training and development day. This year, we are hoping to have that on Tuesday, October 1st. We have tentatively booked the Grand Wayne Center for that event.
Any discussion?
Can you tell, is there a particular subject matter that's going to be discussed at the?
We are still booking our speakers. We are hoping to have presentations on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also believe we may be hearing a keynote from our new Indiana poet laureate.
Wow, okay.
Oh, that's cool.
Move for acceptance?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And by nay, no? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, let's adjust our staffing table.
Let's do that. If I could ask Kurt to be so kind to go ahead and approach the podium, please? Thank you. So the Friends of the Lincoln Collection, an organization of which Kurt and I both serve on the board, at their February 12th meeting, they approved financial support for a three-year grant-funded educational outreach coordinator for the Rowland Center. And for their support, they are committing to both the salary and the benefits for this position. So it would be fully funded for three years at minimum from the Friends of the Lincoln Collection. However, the position would be an ACPL employee, and therefore, we would need to have an adjustment to our staffing table to reflect that position. And I've asked Kurt to speak to what this position would mean for the Lincoln Collection and the Rowland Center.
Absolutely. Thank you, Susan, and thank you, trustees. We're excited because this is another step in a really important and I think exciting journey for the Lincoln Collection. Just quickly, 2009, the collection came to the state of Indiana. We got the great honor and fortune of curating the two-dimensional items. We have walked from an amazing artifact collection to curating artifacts and digital assets, and then walked it out of the lower basement level into a public space, also funded by the Friends of the Lincoln Collection. And year over year, the first two years, we've had great attendance. We're looking for superb attendance. And we believe that the environmental scans that we've done amongst schools in northeast Indiana, amongst educators from southwest Allen and foreign community schools, that if we had an education outreach coordinator that had the responsibility of touching every single school, every single school in Allen County, all the major schools in the collar counties, that attendance and visitorship in the Rowland Center would skyrocket. And as importantly, I would argue more importantly, we would educationally touch the lives of tens of thousands of children with a really neat piece of America's history that we curate right here in the Allen County Public Library. So we're really grateful with the support that the Friends of the Lincoln Collection continue to give. And they're excited as well about this opportunity to really bring young people and educators to this wonderful collection. They already fund two of our full-time librarians, our Lincoln librarians. They have, I think, if I can say this, the funnest job in the world, all Lincoln, all the time. So they really can go deep and go broad. And they have engaged virtually students in like seven different states, as far away as Virginia, and have interacted with a lot of students here in Allen County. We're looking to expand that. And we think a dedicated educational outreach coordinator will be just the position to leverage this amazing asset that we curate here at the Allen County Public Library.
Thank you, Kurt. With that as a background, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be making the motion and voting in the affirmative for this, Kurt. I'm just curious if we have anybody that we've, internal, that we can promote up to this position?
We always, Sharon, look for those candidates. We will be really focusing on someone who has connections with educators, possibly even some experience in the education arena because we're really looking for that connection with all the schools in the county and the major ones in the county, in the surrounding county. So we always welcome staff to apply for jobs that are posted. We don't have anyone like in mind right now, but we have a great staff, as you know. And so who knows who might be interested in that and have a resume that is a little hidden from us right now.
Thank you.
Kurt, could you remind us, what is the pay grade for P2? What, you know, the?
It's a professional librarian position, so we're looking at the salary in the low 40s.
Okay. But it's not requiring the MOS degree, right?
No.
Bachelor's degree?
Okay.
I think it starts at 46. Usually, someone in a P2 is $46,000 to $55,000.
Okay.
Further questions? Sharon, you want to make the motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the acceptance of the moving the grid for the educational outreach coordinator.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
You have an outreach worker. Once you find him or her. David, would you like to introduce our guest?
I would. I would. And just as a few comments to introduce this topic, we're wanting to make a presentation to you today on a large project that we're looking to move forward on. It is actually a combination of three different projects. The first being the roof of the main library. That is, was put in in 2005. It is reaching and possibly at end of life already. And because that is happening, and the second part of the project is a major renovation on the main library's HVAC system, particularly the chillers and the cooling towers. These are water, old bay, or old technology, water-based chillers that, and the cooling towers, they need to be replaced. The problem with it is, the way these were installed, they are underneath the roof. And so if we are going to replace the roof, the time to move on those and replace those with more efficient and more accessible units would be when the roof is being done. And then the third project is the implementation of solar panels on the roof. We've been looking at abilities to go more energy efficient, go green. There are incentives available through the Inflation Reduction Act that would make the installation of solar panels and the reduction of energy to us very attractive at this point. So that's really the summary of the three components. With us today are our consultants, some of our consultants. I think Joan is finishing it off. Joan, if you want to go up front. Joan Garbasiak is our Train representative. Train had been with us as our HVAC and consultants for a number of years. And I'll let her kick the presentation off. And I think all of you have the written presentation in front of you.
Thank you, board members and Allen County Library associates. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Joan Garbasiak. I am an account manager for Train. I've been here for 17 years. The partnership with Train has been 20-plus. A little bit of introduction. I'll do a project, or how we got here in the history of our partnership with the Allen County Library. We'll also do our chiller turnkey project review. And with that, I'll have Mike Morlog helping me. And he is our turnkey project specialist. Our solar will be done by Tim Stam. He's our comprehensive solutions manager. And then the roofing is going to be with Garland, and that is Austin Papenbrock, along with Steve Park. And then we'll have questions and answers. And then if there's ever a question why we're presenting, don't hesitate to stop us. This is your meeting, so we're willing to ask questions anytime. So the partnership history, a little bit how we got here today. In 2003, the Allen County Library had a very strong desire to integrate their, all their buildings into one single platform for building automation. That, Allen County teamed up with MSKTD, and they went into a contract to design this for the public or for, you know, public bidding. And I think three or four contractors bid on this job. And Train was awarded this in late 2003. We began work in 2000, May of 2004. And all of your buildings, 14 of them, are all connected on the same platform. So everybody, it's an easy job for Jake, so. Currently, we have over 250 pieces of equipment that are attached to that control system. And we have over 47,000 control points that we monitor 24/7. And during the day, it's monitored by the staff of Allen County. And at evening, it's Train Intelligence Services. So we have a monitoring system that's looking at your building at all times. And really, the major things that we're looking at is your list station, generators, boilers, pumps, chiller alarms. Any building that would be without heat, it would be notified immediately. Air handlers, rare books room, another very large, important piece of equipment toward the buildings. And then all 14 buildings have humidity and temperature alarms that go out.
Joan, that the Train Intelligence Services, is that actually you and me that are watching?
Yes.
Anything about this?
Yes. Yes. We're called the Train Intelligent Services. It's based out of our Columbus, Ohio facility, but it is manned by actual trained technicians that pretty much.
So if there's an issue, they contact library staff?
Yes.
Designated?
Yes. Yeah, we work with the library staff to do an on-call 20, you know, whoever was on call with Jake's maintenance team. And then if they don't answer, then they would call us and we would respond to the call. Any other questions? This is just a little slide on Train and our sustainability goals. We want, are 100% focused helping our customers be sustainable. And that's part of the solar project, helping you out with that. This next few slides are about the chiller and the observations and existing conditions of where it's at in the library. So the pictures, I know they're kind of small in there, but there's four pictures, and those are exactly where the chillers are at in the sub-basement of the library. And they are reaching end of useful life. The equipment is very hard to get to and accessible for service. Also, the refrigerant that's in these chillers are getting phased out by the EPA due to global warming. Rebuilding the chillers would be very difficult and costly to access accessibility. The reason is, well, the only way of getting to the chillers is through an elevator that holds 5,000 pounds. An example, one compressor weighs 4,000 pounds. So getting these in and out of this area would be extremely, I don't think we can do it, to be honest. And then the chiller, the chiller connected with the cooling tower is also vintage 2004. So we'd be replacing that. That, and the towers require a lot of ongoing chemical treatment, maintenance, and water consumption.
Joan, assuming Train gets the contract, would it require closing the library during this period?
No. We have put in place, when we are doing this and we're replacing the chillers, we have a temporary chiller that will be installed. So the library would not have to be closed down, and it would also be able to be air-conditioned while we're doing the work. And that's included in our scope and price. So I think I went through the towers. And then also, the thermal battery storage, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but on the level of the parking garage, you have 20 what's called CalMac tanks, and they're ice tanks. These would still be able to be used. They're in great shape. And how, what we, how we utilize those CalMac tanks is that they make ice at night through the chiller system. And then during the day, chillers are shut off, and that ice burns to cool the building. So that is a sustainable project, an energy savings project. And these would still be used with the new chiller system that we are going to be able to put in place.
So you were saying those things are vintage, which I take to mean old and outdated.
Old.
But the thermal battery storage is not. It's doing fine.
Correct. Right. Really, in the CalMac tanks.
Because it seems like the most old-fashioned thing I've ever heard of.
Yeah.
We freeze ice, we let it melt.
Yeah. And Mike, I mean, there are really no moving parts in the CalMac tanks, really. There's just coils, and so they last for a very long time. There's no real moving mechanical parts inside of those, so.
How big are these tanks? What size? How many gallons are they holding?
So there's 20 of them. And they fill the entire room. And they produce enough for, what, 600?
Yeah, they produce the equivalent of a 500 tons' worth of cooling or a chiller. So physically, there's 20 of them, but each one is approximately eight feet wide by, oh, eight or nine feet tall. So I'm not sure gallons. I know that off the top of my head, but yeah.
Yeah.
They're, yeah, 20 of them, you can picture about that size.
I've toured the building, but I've never seen that.
You haven't seen them?
I've never seen them.
I want to jump you forward in your presentation, but you had mentioned that the accessibility to the ones we currently have are close to impossible or very challenging. So will you address what the, how will, where we'll place the new ones?
Yes. Yes, this is coming up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And Mike's going to take the next couple of slides here.
That's perfect, yeah, that's a perfect segue into what our proposed solution is. So the solution that we have really takes advantage of the most current technology and efficiencies. And the one big change is that, whereas the current system that Joan has described uses two of these chillers that are in the sub-basement and inaccessible and very difficult to get to. And then, and a cooling tower on the roof of the building. So that's three major components. What we have proposed here is, the one change is that we go to a system that uses air-cooled chillers on the roof in place of the cooling towers. So the scope of the project essentially is that you go from having a cooling tower on the roof, and then these two chillers down in the basement. Well, the chillers in the basement go away, so there is no major mechanical equipment in terms of those compressors and the refrigerants and everything down in the sub-basement. We only have these chillers that are on the roof. So a major advantage to this project and this approach is that it's reduced amount of equipment and reduced servicing, and then everything is located on the roof and accessible, so.
Will they be removed, the ones in the basement? Will they be removed? Or are they just there forever?
They can, they can be removed, but they will be, you know, this, it will be mechanically made, you know, not usable any longer. Refrigerant will be taken from them. It's, it's an option to remove them. But we can cut them up and get them out. They need to be cut up and taken out. So it would just be disruptive.
If we need space, assuming we need space, they can be removed?
It is usable space, and it will be somewhat disruptive, but they certainly can come out, yes.
And that was one of the questions that Ben asked. Part A of, and part B was, would that be included in the pricing quotes? The cost to remove them?
They, they can be removed, yes.
Now, the cost, would you quote that out?
It's at, in the current, in the current project, we would disable, and they would stay. But they can be removed. It would just be a, at an additional cost.
Will you provide that number?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, you mentioned this is, this is most, is this the most recent? Are we kind of like technology? Or is there more recent even that? In terms of technology? No, this is, it's, it's current technology.
It's not new technology, it's just current technology. So the air-cooled chillers are, it's not something that, that is new. It certainly has been around for quite a while. But the efficiency of air-cooled chillers has improved, just like all equipment, you know, has as, through, through the evolution. And they're tremendously efficient, and they use all the most, the most current technology, variable frequency drives and things like that, variable speed fans. So they, it is the most current technology for chillers at this point.
Do you have an expected useful life for it yet?
Expected useful life?
Yes.
Expected useful life is, is at 20 years.
Would it be a closed system?
Exactly. That is, maybe you've, you've seen it in bullet points, but you're, you're hitting on all the, all the topics. The current system is an open system with the cooling towers that have open water that evaporates, which is part that we talked about. They consume water, and chemicals are used in that system and then evaporated into, into the environment. Well, this system, the chillers that get put onto the roof then are closed down into the, to the loop. So it is an entirely closed system that does not consume any water or use additional chemicals.
Correct.
Where are they manufactured? Are they domestically manufactured?
They are. These, these chillers are manufactured in Pueblo, Colorado. Yes.
And just out of curiosity, there's a intense water usage to make the ice?
Okay, there, there actually is not. That, that's a good question. It is a closed, yeah, it's a closed loop. So these chillers, let, let me just go through the bullet points.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it'll, I think it will be, it'll be understandable. So we'll remove the cooling towers from the roof. The new chillers will go in place of where the cooling tower is now. So the little diagram on the left shows that. But fortunately, the chillers that we're proposing and that we need fit exactly in place of where the cooling towers are. So everything is hidden. Nothing is newly visible externally. It fits inside of that location. We then install piping from these chillers down to the basement where the existing chillers are. And that goes in place of the current cooling tower piping. But piping is run down in there, and then it, it ties into the existing system, which is a closed loop, and the thermal storage. So it ties into the current ice tank system, and that's actually all closed. So what these machines will do, and what the current system does, is they will actually make the ice at night. So they make extremely cold mixture of fluid, glycol fluid, in the 20s, that goes over to those ice tanks. And those ice tanks actually have two layers. So inside, they use the glycol, and then the outside, it's just water. But that water just freezes and then melts. Freezes and melts, it's not an open system. It's always closed. So these tie right back into that existing system. It's closed loop. It's always closed. They do the same function of making the ice at night and then melting it during the day. There's just much less equipment to operate and maintain, which is the primary, one of the biggest benefits of the system.
And because it's a closed system, it pretty much recycles the water, uses the same water all the time.
It does. It is a zero-water-consuming system. It stays closed. Correct. Yes.
I had two questions, actually. You mentioned Duckworth going, does it new? Or is it going to fit where things already are? Are we going to have to shut, change things inside while we're doing that part?
It does fit, yeah. It fits inside of an existing chase. There is no need to disrupt any of the floors. So it does fit inside of an existing chase that can run up and down. And as Joan mentioned, a temporary machine, a temporary chiller would be hooked up external to the building that we run in. It wouldn't, it wouldn't interrupt any, any operations. So yeah, it would be inside.
And is there like technology where you can connect this to the internet and you can monitor things inside of it more easily than what we're doing now?
Right. Correct. Correct, as Joan mentioned, where we have the intelligence services and all of our equipment connected to a central system. These machines will tie directly into that system and then be part of, of that 24/7 continuous monitoring.
Seems like monitor runs that detect the water levels, right? And if the, if something happens, it indicates that there's a leak somewhere because the water levels are below what we would consider standard.
Correct. It would, it would detect any problems with, yeah, the water systems or a cooling malfunction or something like that, an alarm. Jake can instant. Yes.
Are there instances where, in the past, parts or the entire system has gone down in locations that you operate right now?
Parts, that parts of the system have gone down? For the current existing system?
No, this proposal.
Oh, this proposed system?
That it's been around for a number of years.
Oh, from a technology standpoint. There, of, of course, there are potential for mechanical, mechanical issues where a certain piece of equipment would be down. That, that's not unusual for something to be down. But with the, the, the system that's proposed and is in place in terms of redundancy, there are two chillers going in. So if you have a problem with one, it could be down for service, and you have another one. And each chiller has redundancy built into it, multiple circuits, multiple fans, multiple compressors, things like that. So there are multiple chillers, there's redundancy built into the system.
Thank you.
What safety measures do you guys have in place for cyber attacks? Since a lot of it is on the web for protecting and monitoring?
That, yeah, that's a good question. It's a, it's probably one that I would need our IT folks who, you know, work directly with IT to elaborate on. I don't know if, Joan, you feel more capable than I do. But it's, we have a specific team that, that does it. I know in terms of how our system interfaces with your network, there's, you know, there's safeguards. There's the whole tunneling and and encryption and things. I I'm not qualified to to give the, you know, the technical answers, but I know that safety measures are in place to prevent it. Many years ago, there was a situation in in where the HVAC, this is ten, fifteen years ago, became a a part of a part of where cyber could could get into. So it has certainly become more than a standard part of HVAC systems to have the correct, you know, blocking of of anything like that. And our system absolutely does have it. I just can't technically speak to it, okay? And then this this last, let's see, I can't hear the computer. Okay, all right. So so some of the highlights, and I think we probably I've spoken to several of them, but reduced operating expenses, all the maintenance costs associated with cooling tower is eliminated. So like we said, we're going from three major pieces of equipment down to two. The water and chemical treatments no longer required with that, you know, water consumption as well. Future cost avoidance, this speaks to, you know, the avoid avoided cost of the three components, cooling tower and multiple chillers that are inaccessible. Though, you know, we're at end of life of that equipment now, so doing the project now avoids avoids that in the future. Five-year parts and labor, our equipment is provided standard with that. So this is a, you know, in terms of a reset button, that's five full years with a project like this of of full warranty. And then reduced carbon footprint from a from from that standpoint, you know, I think Joan touched on it quickly, but the newest chillers use non-ozone-depleting, low global warming refrigerants. So it's a big carbon footprint reduction to use current technology, new machines that have refrigerants that are currently manufactured, whereas what is in the building now and what is used is a is a high global warming potential product. So it is a car- a big carbon footprint reduction project to eliminate existing chillers and and those new ones.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. The five-year warranty is going to be for the new parts only and we still would need to figure out a different way to replace or repair if something happened to the existing parts you tap into.
Correct. The five-year parts and labor would be on the new specific machinery and equipment provided. We are tying into an existing system. So down the line, pumps or things like that that are not replaced as part of this project would not extend into a warranty.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple question, it may not be for you, but for Dave. Do we have an estimate of the reduced operating expenses annually or anything? I think it's a hundred thousand a year, ten thousand a year, what?
I don't for this one. We have on for the solar, you know, what we would be looking at on that, but not on the reduced cost here. I mean, the key is for me is you're going to have less of the water consumption, which has become even more important now because of the storm water assessments that are in from city utilities. I think at one point I had heard at peak consumption, we're going through like seven gallons of water a minute when it's the peak of summer and those water towers are evaporating water quickly. So it's the reduction of that. And then just the chemicals and things that need to go into those water cooling tanks and the maintenance on them are, you know, going to be significant, but to what the total amount, I'm not sure.
I wouldn't mind a ballpark, it's okay, though, if you let us know. And then the other part I had, I was saying for these chillers and refrigerant, and I know that changes over the years. Is this this thing's upgradable at all or do we have to, ten years from now, there's a new reg, like, well, you gotta do this. Can we have to replace them or can you upgrade these things or?
I, that is a good question for thinking they have changed. The cycle on refrigerants has been somewhere around the fifteen to twenty-year mark where they've, you know, been mandated. I would be, I I wouldn't be able to say that there'll be a new drop in refrigerant for this so that eighteen years from now, when they when this one becomes obsolete, I I couldn't say that that's the case. But I could say I can tell you that this refrigerant, you know, and and what their what what the EPA has come up with now, it's it at least has a twenty-year expected, you know, lifespan in terms of what what it's not going to become obsolete within the life of this chiller. I will say that. Even the old chillers that are there now, the chiller has the the refrigerant has become obsolete. It's no longer able to be manufactured. It's, you know, it's it's not supposed to be used anymore in new equipment, but it can continue to be maintained and supported until it's replaced. And that's the, you know, the way they do that because there's so much out there. So this piece of equipment, that refrigerant will be usable for the life, the life cycle of the piece of equipment.
How long has this type of equipment been in operation? This isn't a prototype?
Twenty-five, thirty years. Air-cooled chillers have been in used for a a long time. They have just become a lot more efficient, which is the reason that they are applied in more circumstances and more situations now. So they have become much more efficient and so, yeah, it is not new technology.
Georgetown and New Haven both have air-cooled chillers.
And that's a good point, Ben. I mean, unfortunately or fortunately, I was here when this contract first went in. And, you know, at the time, we're we're kind of bad-mouthing the water-cooled chillers. At that time in two thousand and five, those were the best technology at the time. And so they were installed there. They were more efficient than the air chill air-cooled at that point. But now air-cools have become much more efficient, much more cost-effective.
That's a very good summary, yeah.
Can you, because I've learned a lot from visiting Project Zodiac about closed systems, open systems and all that good stuff. Can you share with us, this is one that was a big thing for them, the sound decimals of the units being put up above?
Yeah, very good question, excellent question. The the units that are going above where in place of the cooling towers now are are chillers where it's a cooling tower now. So the current the current situation is a cooling tower which has fans, motors, moves. It's a relatively quiet piece of equipment. The chillers that are going up there will have a different sound profile. And one thing is is they they would be noisier, they will be noisier when they're making, when they're running hard. But that is the good part about the perfect part about this arrangement is the only time that happens is at nighttime, in the middle of the night when no one's around. So ten, eleven o'clock till five or six in the morning, that's the time period. And the reason that's done is to take advantage of low utility rates. So they would they will run harder when no one's here, those that type of timeframe, ten o'clock to six in the morning. And so they would have a little more noise then. During the day, the ice is melted and used for cooling and they will only come on to supplement when it's when it's really needed. And I can tell you that when they're partially, when they're partially running, they're tremendously quiet, extremely quiet. Can stand, they would be the just as quiet as the cooling towers are. So when they're really ramped up and and really running to make the ice at night, they could be louder than what the cooling towers are now, but that's in the middle of the night. During the day, they'll be very similar, the same.
Well, we have across the street from the library residences. Last time we didn't have them. Would the noise be the same as ambient nighttime noise? Would it cause disturb? Because we want to be sensitive to our neighbors.
Right. It would be similar to all other rooftop equipment that's in in the in the area, in a downtown area. So this is equipment that's applied in many other buildings in adjacent areas.
And there is a big surround around it that faces the other way. The opening to access the surround around that is actually back toward.
Parked in field.
Yep.
Okay, good.
There is a big screen wall system around that encloses the entire.
Okay, so it's gonna have a dampening effect and anything that goes to our neighbors, you might actually want to try to sleep.
Well, we're getting a class on this.
Very good questions.
Thank you.
Hi, as introduced, my name is Austin Patton-Brock. I'm with the Garland Company. This is Steve Park, Basic Elements Design. Several years ago, I came in and started working with Jake and and Dave, needing just assessment of some of your facilities. And some became all. And through that time, just evaluated the facilities, looking at those exteriors, conditions, and what could be done to maintain what you had, what could be done to improve some of the conditions, and then start planning out the life of those and and some of the expectations you would need for the future. In doing that, put everything into a database. It's a web-based database, gives you full access to see all of your facilities, the assets that are on those facilities. So whether it's a facility with one roof section to a building that has multiple. And then also helped start collecting local contractor rates, getting you time and material rates so that if you did have an opportunity for improvement, lots of leaks, Jake could make a a call or jump on the website, hit a blue button and almost immediately have someone out there to help stop those leaks. So during that time, we've also had a lot of discussions about some of the needs that were coming. And with as many facilities as you have, some of those needs are going to be together and some of those are staggered out probably over the next fifteen to twenty years. And we started putting together a spreadsheet to help manage that. During that time, a tree fell, had a buoy. We had people out there the next day working around chainsaws to to patch up an eight-foot hole in the wall, many holes in the roof, and helped navigate some of those insurance avenues to get that covered for you so you could get a new roof up there, get that back open, and this summer to get a brand-new roof on there for you. So I promised Jake that I would make low-slope roofing as pain-free as possible and hopefully no one falls asleep during this, so. So wanted to just kind of take this, again, it's it's low-slope roofing. I compete with tires. I know, not real exciting. So we we just wanted to do snapshots. So we're gonna start with what you have and we're gonna kind of lead through some recommendations and then some solutions that brought Steve in to help us design. So understanding what you have up there at Maine, the majority of your roof is low-slope with a nice beautiful standing seam barrel roof that goes down the middle. Your major conditions are with that roof, entering into about its twentieth year. And looking back in history, you've had some conditions that have been ongoing. But really what's occurring there is the membrane that's there is cracking and splitting. And as it's aged and deteriorated, the adhesives aren't holding together the seams. The other thing is it's created large air blisters. The air blisters are actually lifting the membrane and causing additional pressure. So the other one, this has been a major one that we've addressed many, many times and we've had some great contractors up there to help buy time, is your drains and your drain sumps have failed. So in a lot of cases, the last place to get rid of water is your worst conditions right now. Some of the other things that have led to this, which will be addressed with with Steve's design, are there was just some inadequate or some insufficient slope. So you take a low-slope roof and when you have a little belly or a low spot, that water can't travel anymore to the drain. That compounds on itself, causing more. And water sitting on a membrane magnifies the sun, the weight, and then also freeze and thaw. Some improper terminations or just lack of termination details, we're gonna work on with the new design. And then there was just some very difficult perimeter details around that that with time kind of failed. So we're coming up with better and unique ways to finish those. The one for your metal roof, and you're gonna we're gonna show a couple pictures, is that metal roof was never designed with gutters. So the water runs off your barrel, it hits your beautiful windows on, I guess that'd be the north side, but on the south side, it hits an ephesus wall. So it's stucco-style-looking wall and it's deteriorated to the point where water's intruding into the wall, so. So again, just to show you a couple pictures, here's what I'm referring to as a drain sump. You see the two drains, the water comes into the drain. You can see that this one has been attempted to be repaired and water's getting in. But you can also see how the sheet is very wrinkled. And and that's just as that sheet is expanded and contracted, it's starting to fail over time. So next, we're I'm looking at that barrel roof. The water's coming off, unfortunately, it's not being caught by a gutter. It's running down and not only staining, but if you really look at those walls, the conditions that keep the water out are failing and cracking in those cases. Gutters are gonna tremendously help this and then allow us to plan for that next step for repairing those. But to repair those today without a gutter, you're gonna be right back in that same scenario very, very quickly.
Are we seeing water on the inside?
Different signs at different areas. So on the other side of the building, up at your upper area, the roof doesn't come down as low, but you have conditions of of water entry along those windows and we think it's just too much water. The windows are designed to shed, so yes, there are signs of water. To the heaviest extent, I would have to rely on Jake to tell you that.
It usually depends on the type of weather, which way the wind's blowing. It'll definitely blow it up through some things a little more. Nothing ongoing, but there are some times when we get some winds coming out of the the wrong direction, so to speak, that will come in, will have some wet spots and the ceiling will be able to dry out and all that.
No, no risk of material being damaged?
I can't say no risk, but low risk.
So the next picture, just went to another drain. This condition right here, this was one that just showed well. But as you walk across the roof and you look, you see a roof membrane. With a little bit more investigation, taking the time to get down, this is what's occurring where the adhesives that were originally in there have deteriorated and the sheets have just separated. So once they've opened up, water intrusion. The other thing is wet insulation. Wet insulation also leads to other interior conditions, so. This photo, when I kind of said earlier, there was just some what I would I called insufficient detailing. So one thing in this photo, you can see that there's ponding water, that is throughout the facility. And that's just where there wasn't enough slope. But this also shows a detail that Steve and I actually sat in here for about a half an hour. We're drawing up some new details for you so we can eliminate. There there are signs of water along the the bottom of these windows. And it's it's where the sill is, so we came up with a detail that is actually redundant ceiling of that. So it'll keep the membrane sealed and it'll seal that current condition and take care of some of those concerns we have there. And then again, just showing you another one with a little bit of vegetation growing around the drain.
Is there any sign of mold growing where the water's getting in?
So that is a fantastic question. Mold growth will occur if there is an organic compound and moisture. And that would be one of the concerns and actually some of the justifications that we're gonna talk about. Because unfortunately, a lot of times where mold or mildew grow are where we can't see it because it's concealed. If it is growing on that wall, you will address it immediately. Is it above a ceiling tile or in a wall cavity that hasn't found its way out? Those are the concerning ones because typically by the time you see them, it's too late, you know? So so recommendations, you have an aged roof, we just talked about, what would be some of the recommendations for it? So our recommendation in this case is you're beyond repairs for this roof. Replace it with a a highly protective but also reflective long-term solution. So your return on investment is gonna be best on something that lasts a long, long time, especially if you choose to implement the solar on it. Solar panels last a very long time now. To remove them and replace your roof would be beyond expensive in the future. So the benefits of a new roof obviously are gonna be that watertight protection. We're gonna improve the building's efficiency during that. You're spending a lot of money to to heat and cool the facility. The the roof design is gonna increase the R-value of the roof. We're gonna increase the solar energy generation for those panels. We're gonna utilize a system that is low to almost no odor inside your facility. So we're not gonna interrupt the workers or the patrons. And it's a low-noise installation process. There's not gonna be jackhammers and 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 very a lot of equipment up there. And then again, that long-term durable protection, redundant protection actually in this system, so.
Jake, can I interrupt?
Of course.
What does long-term mean to you?
So long-term to me would be looking at a a system that is not only designed to, but guaranteed to last thirty to forty-plus years. So, you know, we recommendations for the system, but then justifications for those recommendations. And what and what are some of these justifications and implement, you know, and implementation in twenty twenty-four? Stopping those leaks that are occurring a lot of ti- a lot. They're over your library and your genealogy. They obviously cause damage, but they cause interruption, interior facility protection. But again, that bullet point, mold and mildew growth potentials, right? We want to eliminate that before it ever happens. And then just protecting the people in the library. There is a potential for a slip and fall when water's on the floor. You can avoid some annual inflation cost, typically seeing anywhere from seven to ten percent increase. COVID kind of expedited that unfortunately the last couple of years. So knowing that you do need it, by taking care of it, you're gonna save yourself probably that seven to ten percent each year. You're gonna be able to capture your solar energy incentives and your clean energy. And here's a big one that I think is a great benefit for you. We've had the roof completely scanned by a third independent party. They did a thermal and nuclear scan of your roof. And what they're looking for is moisture that's trapped in the insulation. When it's wet, it's gotta be thrown out. The great news is we've managed these leaks by responding almost immediately. Out of a hundred thousand square feet of roof, I think you were less than one thousand square feet of wet. So in those cases, only the wet would have to be removed. So now what we're doing is we're reusing a product that is still current today. So instead of removing it and replacing it with the exact same product, we're preventing about eighty-three dumpsters of debris going into a dump, to landfill. And just as important, you're saving an estimated savings of over five hundred thousand just on the insulation cost.
You may have said this, but what is the current? You may have said this, but what is the current material of the existing roof?
The insulation or the membrane?
The.
I can give you the whole thing if you would like.
Yeah, I mean, in my, in my limited construction mind, it's wood, then ash shingles and all that.
Yeah, so on a house, it would be your shingles and then your substrate board that it's nailed to. In your condition, you have a mineral surfaced modified membrane sheet. That would be over a, what's called a recovery board. So think of a thinner layer of insulation, but it's harder. Then you have multiple layers of insulation board, which is polyisoe insulation.
What's the R factor then?
Right now, I think with your cores, you're sitting at about an R 20, 18 to 20. Insulation does lose a little bit of R value with age, especially if it gets wet, it loses a lot. And then that is over the deck. The majority of the library is concrete with some steel deck areas. So polyi, I'm sorry?
Excuse me, the insulation that's on the roof now is the same insulation that was put in 20-some years ago, when the roof was put on.
Yes.
Correct? And the same, it sounds great, you'll save the dumpsters. Doesn't it deteriorate after 20 years just by a normal life expectancy?
It's a very dense board and I'll ask Steve to advise on this as well. Insulation in general does lose R value over time with compression. But it's a very low rate for polyisoe insulation, like extremely low on decimal points sometimes. Has a PSI of I think about 10 to 15 depending on your insulation. So insulation in your attic, very loose, over time, gravity pulls it down, you need to reapply. In this case, we're talking if it compressed. I mean, you stand on the board, I mean, it's a very hard board. Do you know?
I can tell you off the tongue, yeah.
So to deteriorate, I would say no. It's been captured in a dry environment, except for the leak areas. It's been captured in a dry environment. And then what we're going to do is we're going to add additional to that to increase the R value. More than what was lost with the additional insulation. That layer also does something else. It's a separator of old and new. But you will have, you will have an increased R value when you're done. Even over factoring loss as well from age. But the great news is that insulation that was used in this roof back in 2005 is the same industry standard, if you will, for roof insulation.
So you would only remove the bad pieces and you double those pieces up? Because we'll still have our current and you'll go on top of the good with the new stuff?
Yeah.
And you'll double those pieces up?
So anywhere that you cut out, we refill that area with light materials, back to existing thickness, secure that, and then build your new insulation and roof system over the top of that, yes.
And will that help with our pitch and slope where it's? I mean, I know it will, that's why you're doing it, but it, the current has created those. How long do you see that we could go without those pitches and slope?
The issues?
Happening again, yeah.
For the entire life of the roof system. We're going to increase those areas that had slope or taper in all areas between drains and your slope. Steve has a nice balanced set of drawings over there that he's been working on. If you would like to start seeing layout, they're the preliminary set at this point. But yeah, there are some drawings, taking what was originally designed for your facility and increasing those so that it is to eliminate those pounding areas in the future.
And I asked this question because 20 years ago, they didn't mean to make pounding areas, right? So something happened.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what reasonably, what happened? And how, what did you do to make sure that's not going to happen again in 30 years?
Well, we're increasing the saddle areas around the roof drains. So we're increasing the slopes so we get more positive drainage to them. It's easy to see where the water's pounding currently, but so we can also add taper to those areas too. Just to make sure that we have a positive direction toward the drains. Increasing it is probably the biggest advantage.
So I assume there was some deterioration over the last 20 years that caused that and I guess?
So what can happen is your deck can deflect. So with time, depending on how a building's structure is, some buildings settle, but some decks actually deflect down. And that can cause it. Some facilities, extra weight is added to the bottom of the deck, which actually pulls it down. And then in other cases, just during the process of trying to get that slope, sometimes it's slightly missed. But as Steve was saying, so a saddle in between drains is going to look like a diamond. We looked at some of the original designs and we've decided to increase the width. So we're going to push that slope up into the roof where it's high. So when the water comes down, it's actually forced to go to the drains faster than it is today. So if you would, if you would like to see some details, we would love to geek out and show you some.
We'll have a separate meeting.
Yes, 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 we, yes.
Originally, when the low slope roofs started, they actually designed them flat. Because theoretically, scientifically, if you have a flat surface, water cannot stand on it. Well, the problem is you can't get a truly flat roof.
Yeah.
And so that's where we went in with slope, slight slopes to get it to drainage. But we keep increasing those a little bit at times.
So we'll add new drainage system cover things to the whole system as well?
Yeah, so any drains that are found to be defective or already known to have issues, a plumber's going to be addressing those from the interior side, plumbing side. On the top, all drains will be actually opened up down to what's called a drain bowl. The drain bowl ring is removed, the roof is built in. It's actually flashed in like with three redundant conditions. And then the drain is reset with a cover to keep that debris out of your plumbing. Did that answer?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, looking at what we currently have, you can see some of the reason that the water would have to be at certain level of thickness in order to drain out of here. So if it's not deep enough, it's just going to sit there anyway.
That's correct. So when a drain bowl is set too high, the water just sits around it. And the other thing we're going to do is these sumps, these small sumps are actually exaggerated in all conditions. And then they're tapered down again. So water's drawn to the sump and then into the drain, eliminating the high spots. Great question.
Thank you.
Okay, last one. So just kind of wanted to show you a rendering of what a long-term roof would look like with some, a system. So back to kind of what we were talking about, what does that roof look like? So if you looked at the, this piece up, that is the system that we're going to add to your existing roof. So at the bottom, that yellow board, that's, that's that additional insulation that's adding the R value, polyisoe insulation. It would be adhered directly to the old insulation system. The white looking board next is a high-density recovery board. That board is a very dense, hard board. And what it does, it gives a good, solid, strong substrate for the new roof system to be attached to. It doesn't allow deflection or damage to that membrane. It would be almost like putting something on, like a piece of concrete. The next is actually a substrate membrane. It's an SBS membrane. It's actually glued to that recovery board and it's glued with an adhesive that is actually a waterproofer as well. And then your top membrane, the white reflective membrane, it is set in a low odor spatter spray adhesive and it's glued. That membrane not only is one of, if not the longest lasting membrane, it is highly reflective as well, which is going to provide extra efficiency to a solar system. Plus also keep your building cool.
Austin, quick question.
Yes.
A lot of this is going on top of the existing roof, you're saying?
Yes.
Is there, is our structure sound enough that, you talked about deflection or something like that? That would, is our structure sound enough to have this added?
Fantastic question. So code, we thought, we always follow code. But the first question, the first thing we even look at is, we look at the as-built designs. We look at that and then structural analysis is completed to make sure that the building can handle that additional weight.
Speak to the 30-year no-dollar limit.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
So a no-dollar limit warranty would refer to, instead of just warranting the cost of what you purchased, it would say that over the 30-year life, regardless of what the cost is associated, repairs and/or replacements would occur to make sure that that roof is watertight. That would also include not only just the membrane, but the labor that's involved with that. So other warranties, there are still great warranties, but a 30-year limited warranty would state that the original dollar amount that your project cost is what that warranty will cover through its life until you've reached that dollar amount. So if you bought something for $100, if repairs added up to $100, you would be done with your warranty at that point. This warranty helps take care of some of those additional inflationary costs over the future. If, if something were to occur and you needed a replacement or a repair.
I'm still, I'm still confused. From the day you turned, give us the key to this thing.
Yeah.
For a 30-year period, if in year two, something goes wrong, you cover it at no cost to us?
Yes.
And in year 15?
Keep covering, labor and warranty, so.
But not material?
And material.
And material?
Yes, yes.
That's a hell of a warranty.
There's just a lot of different warranties out there. So one of the things that Steve and I are working on is specifying a system and the warranty behind it. There are times where limited warranties are very good. But in this case, we thought it was important to specify a system that's going to allow you to be covered with all, all aspects of that system. Outside of routine maintenance, right? Maintenance items are provided, take care of those. The rest of that watertight system is covered, labor and materials.
And the installation of the solar would not jeopardize that warranty?
That's correct. So the fact that we were working together is how we came up with this system. You know, roof systems, there are a lot of great roof systems out there. Knowing what type of solar they want to put on, knowing what the conditions are of its framework, understanding that that system needs to be there for 30, 40 years was one of the reasons we went with this solution. Also with the added benefit of its extremely high score on reflectivity.
Who exactly is giving the warranty? Who's that?
The manufacturer of that. So if it was a Garland system, Garland is giving it directly to the client.
So that leads me to ask, well, we can get in it later, but the viability of the company, if it's a 30-year warranty and we're at year 25?
Yes. Great question you have to ask. What is the company's history and what is it, what is their finances? I can't speak to everyone. We're 130 years, based in Cleveland, we're a 5A1 rating. We're a cash to no debt company. And like I said, the critical piece is regardless of who your warranty would come from, is it needs to come directly. Some of our best, greatest contractors in the area could retire tomorrow. You don't want your warranty tied to that if the manufacturer's giving you the warranty. So that is, that is an awesome thought and question. Make sure the company behind it is still going to be here when that, when you need it.
That's why I asked the question too.
Yes, absolutely.
Who we're talking about.
And ask for copies of the warranty before you buy anything. They should be able to show you the exact warranty, just not signed.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We have one more presentation?
You gotta beat 30 years now.
What's that?
You gotta beat 30 years.
I can beat 30 years.
These things will keep going forever. I'm Tim Sam, I'm with Train. I work on the Train team and comprehensive solutions. So typically larger projects and I've done lots of solar projects with a previous company. So I've got quite a bit of experience with solar and love it. So that solar, being green is a good thing to do, but it should make financial sense or you should not do it. I probably shouldn't say that, but if it doesn't make financial sense, that's not a good thing. So this will do both. So on the left is a picture of the array. So, and we'll get into some detail on that. But at the right is a spreadsheet of kind of the current scenario of what your energy usage is and what the net cost of a system would be. So it's a little boring, but you're using about 5.8 million kilowatt hours of electricity a year in your facility currently. And you're paying about nine and a half cents per kilowatt hour, which is actually really good. That's a good reasonable rate. So over 40 years, you're going to use about 232 million kilowatt hours of electricity theoretically. So the middle section is solar and what we would produce is about 460,000 kilowatt hours in our first year of production. So that field to the left will produce about that much electricity in its first year. So every year, the panels degrade just, just a smidge, a quarter to a half a percent. So we account for that when we give you how much it's going to produce. So how do we come up with that production number? We look at weather patterns in that longitude latitude for 40-plus years. Snowfall and all those kind of things. So we take into account that you're going to have snow and maybe the panels are covered. They call that soiling. So we take all that into account. So that could, if we never had snow and it would probably produce quite a bit more than that 460, but we take those things into account. So over the life, over 40 years, the panels will actually last longer than that. But we're going to say 40 years because we have to stop somewhere to do a scenario. It's a little over 7% of the electric usage in that building, the solar will now take care of. So cost, that's always important. So the array is, would be about $1.3 million for completion. And there's, the IRA, the IRS has, the Internal Revenue Service has the Inflation Reduction Act. And there's, so there's some reasons to, this timing of this is good to do this now. So about 40% of the cost of that array, and I'll get into that later, comes back to you in a check as an incentive to do this because it makes good sense. All the electric cars coming out, there's going to be a higher demand for electricity, more regulations, so it's going to get more expensive. So they want to curtail that and they're, they're incenting, incenting you to do that. So the second line, green line item is, it's called solar renewable energy certificates. For every thousand kilowatt hours you produce, you get a certificate. So I've, those are about $4 a share right now and we trade on the Ohio market. It's not a significant amount of money, but that's every year you'll get a check for whatever the amount of SRECs that you've produced that you sell on the market. So you sell those every year. So usually people hold that kind of as a slush fund for any repairs that might be needed. So the panels themselves have a 25-year warranty. So they're fully warranted for 25 years. The inverters, if you see the little blue dots, those are inverters. Those are about a 15-year, those are a 15-year warranty on those.
And what's the stipulation to achieve the IRA incentive? Starting it or start up during a year? When does this kick in?
It's, well, when the project is complete, so this, if you were to do that this summer, as soon as that is complete, you can file for the, for the incentive.
And I'm under the impression the IRA is going to lapse.
No, it's, the legislation goes out to 2030, but a change in presidency could affect that. So that gets theoretically could change in November even. I don't think that's likely because so many of these projects are in place that they're going to keep that around for a while.
And if I understand correctly, for this, the array has many different things in it, right?
It does.
For solar panels, there's no cap. We're only going to do this up to $500 million. It's, if you apply for it and you qualify, it's going to be incentive.
Yeah, and I've got a slide that, part of the roofing, I'm sorry. So the portion of the roof, if you could, under the darker blue is the solar panels. Any of that roofing is also getting that rebate. It's necessary for the layer, the reflective layer is, you also get the 40% rebate. And I'll go over, there's lots of different modal, different things that you can do. And I'll go over, there's lots of different modal, different things that you can do to get a rebate. Solar is just one of them. And I'll show you the, how those are figured as we go along here.
And isn't it true that, once implemented, we don't have to wait? We can just file right away, file that, and they issue the check to the library for that?
Correct, yeah. It's a, it's a check back to you. Correct, yeah.
Can you talk a bit about what the filing process is like and who's responsible for that?
So, there's a link that will, and I'll show you the link that you go to, and you file that with the IRS, and that goes directly to you. So, what we would provide you is what the cost of the system is and everything applicable for the rebate. So, there are some, that 40% is probably a little low. We conservatively look at everything as far as production, and rebates is down to, we're pretty sure it's going to be at a minimum that. So, there's other components, like if it's US-made materials, so the conduit, wiring, and those kind of things, there's an additional potential rebate for those. We give you that information, and then your tax attorney probably would, would file that for you, and although you're non-taxable, they file that with the IRS, and the rebate would come directly back to you in a check.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any opportunity, and I know that Indiana changed their law where the buyback or pushback is not as much as it used to be, but is there any opportunity to sell back to the grid?
This is a real small array, so that 7% of, you'll, you'll never be, that's an excellent question, because if you overproduce, you sell it back to the utility, and the utility doesn't pay you as much as, as what you'd like. There used to be net metering, and it would, that, I sold a lot of solar projects during net metering. So, if I, if I buy it from the utility for 10 cents, I sell it back to them for 10 cents. Currently, it's probably about four and a half cents that you'd sell it back. But you're producing so little, you're going to wish you had a larger roof, so you could produce more. And there is, it's scalable, there's some other areas we could, we could put solar, but I, it's nice to have areas in case there were a problem that you could move the equipment to. But, yeah, you're not going to be selling any, any back at that rate.
Yeah, because what you're telling us is, we're only going to use, this is only going to help us with 7%, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We're never going to go above.
No, you should never, in a bell curve, you're never going to be selling back, I wouldn't think. It'd be very unlikely. So, we think it makes good sense from a green scenario, but it should make sense financially, and the next slide we'll go over what it does financially. So, I guess the, the column that's gray is if you do not do solar, what you could look at, what your electricity expenses are going to be for the next 40 years. Looking around, $52 million for electricity for the next 40 years. And we use a 4% escalation, escalation on the cost of electricity, so that you're at nine and a half cents now. Currently, we increase that 4% a year, which is very conservative. And nine and a half cents is super low. You're in, there's lots of states that are way above that right now, and you're below the state average. But even with that, it still makes a lot of financial sense. So, the gold column is if you do implement the solar, that's covering about a little over 7%. You'll spend about $49 million, so you save about $3 million, or about $74,000, $73,000 a year. So, it's significant, it makes it worth, it's the right thing to do, and it financially makes sense, so.
So, basically, a 10-year to pay it back over that.
Roughly 10, yeah.
A little over 10.
Yeah, I think the report, that includes the SREC income, but 10 to 15 years will easily be, and then you're producing essentially for free.
I have to admit, I feel like, I was looking at the solar panel, 7%, I didn't think it'd be 100, but 7% seems a little to me, probably as comprehensive as it is. Are that conservative?
That is conservative. Train is a very conservative company. So, that's 7% based upon the equipment that you have currently. So, if we're putting in new equipment, that's going to take down your electric usage, so that means the percentage is going to be a little higher. The roofing's going to be a little more efficient, make it a little more efficient. So, that 7% is, we're very comfortable there. And you should be too.
Being the numbers, is that because your, your array is going to produce the same amount of energy, but if our consumption's going down?
Right.
Then the percentage, okay, calculating.
Yeah, so your, your usage is going down, but we're still producing the same amount, so.
Marty, you could stay around for 50 years and check them out.
That's my plan, Ben.
I am curious to know if our gray season, is that calculated in part of the 7%?
Yes, so, when we, the program's called a helioscope. So, we, we literally look at your weather, weather patterns for 40 years, so good days, bad days, and we take all of that into account. So, some days it won't be 7%, some days it'll be 10%. So, we take all that into account. Any other questions? Okay, so, what, what does it look like on the roof? So, their, their landscape not portrait, so they're, we don't penetrate the roof. So, you're going to do the initial install of the roof, he's going to make sure that that's great. Then we install on top of that, and then he's going to come back and make sure it's still great, so the warranty's still good. So, it's, it's just weight, weight that holds these down, they're ballasted. So, this is like a little sled that it sits on. It's pretty simple. If we need to move things around, we can do that. If there were, you know, a leak, it is, it's, we could move them, it's not a.
So, they're not affixed to the roof? What happens in our strong 80, 90 winds that we, no worries there? Of moving, I'm not worried about them flying off, but moving in the strong one?
No, not really. And all of the solar projects I've done, I've never had that as an issue.
Well, I remember what Sharon's thinking about. We had that de-rachel came through Fort Wayne, and I remember being on the street, and there was construction material on top of the building, and it was big metal panels. They all came flying off. So, yeah, that's, that's.
There is, but, I mean, and then your insurance would, of course, cover something like that. So, if, if everything blew off in a tornado, you'd be, you'd have lots of problems, but it would be, your insurance would cover that. And I think the last slide is, or the last couple of slides. So, these are, the very top line is the solar. The 30% is the second column, that's a given that you'll get. And then the 10% low income, that, the library downtown sits in a low-income area, and that we found out through this website. So, that's an additional 10%.
I'm sorry, that's funny to me.
And then, then that's how you go and get your rebate, is through that link, so. And we're, we're doing these in other libraries, actually with, through an omnia procurement process in Chicago right now, and several other libraries, so that's not unique. Then the cost, I just thought this was kind of interesting. So, the average cost is about 15 cents per kilowatt-hour in the state of Indiana. You guys are low, so say, say thank you, but hold on, because it will not stay there. So, Rhode Island's at about 23 cents a kilowatt-hour. And the average, with a 4% escalation that I used, the average of those 40 years is about 23 cents. So, what they're paying currently, the average is what you're going to pay. So, and your highest year, and that, the scenario we put together was about 43 cents, and I think Hawaii, Hawaii's already paying that now. So, yeah, nobody's ever fought me with the price of electricity is going to go up. Just look at your own, own bill, so. Anyway, that's.
Do you guys have this system on your building?
At Train, we do at Train, not our Fisher's facility now, but we, I've quoted it to the owner of the building. And I'm hoping they'll do it. So, it's, we'll see.
Any further questions of any of the presenters?
I kind of do, just on the, assuming we always say go forward with all this, when do you start, and what's the order of things exactly? Which, which parts go first, which parts go second?
So, the roofing would be first. Concurrently, some of that you could be doing.
We would work, the chiller and the roofing could work. We could synchronize, obviously, there's a lot of square footage up there. Especially if there's an opportunity to utilize any of the same lifts that are being used. The great part is, Joan and I are training, and I have worked together on a lot of projects together, and we are very good at bringing our teams together to make sure everybody plays fairly. But, yeah, roofing would obviously have to go down before solar. But, timing of the chiller and timing of your bid process, approvals and bid process. You might see them both out there at the same time.
And then you're going to be last.
Save the best for last.
Okay.
Sure.
So, I just did a final page for the financial project summary. So, you can see the amounts of each one. The chiller project is first, and then the solar with the incentives, and then the renewable certificates that Tim talked about. And then the roofing project, the rebate there, the IRA incentive on the roofing project, our solar panels will be a portion of like 1.9 million of that total would be eligible for another incentive. So, that would give you another check of $760,000. So, your total incentives for the project is 1.368380, making your net cost the, the difference.
As I stated before, the library has to, you have to give the information to the library, and the library has to request these incentives from the IRA.
Yes, Train won't let us be tax advisors.
And so, we pay you, and we get it back. And we're fairly clear, a library can ask, get money from the IRA, right?
Yeah.
That is not an issue, okay.
Yeah, in fact, I've, I've worked with, I'm working with, actually, Jason Tansel from Baker Tilly, our financial advisors.
Yeah.
They're very up on the filings on these, and, because we don't file a tax return.
Exactly, yeah.
So, it's, it's a new thing, and so they're like, yeah, that's no problem, we can, you know, help you with that. It's not a big deal.
They're doing presentations for the Indiana Library Federation on this topic. So, yes, yes.
Are there any other incentives from the state? I know the ones they listed were from the federal government, but are there any state incentives for this type green initiatives?
I, I think the ones for the solar got taken away some time ago, so, but I do not know about any others that are out there. But I think we should, if you can help us check, let's see if there's anything else out there.
I don't know if, is AEP your provider for? AEP could have incentives for you. It all depends if you opted to be in their program. And Dave would be able to tell that on your bill, they have a line item for that.
Yeah, I don't know, I think part of the reason why we have a low rate is because we are participating in as much as we can with them. That's why we have that low electric rate.
So, who's our point person for overseeing all this? Is it, is there a general, or is it?
No, I mean, obviously, you know, and before we go into that, I mean, Ben had a very good question about, and I don't know if you were talking about over there, but the timeline on this, of course. There is lead time for getting the equipment in and ordered. The roof has to be done first in order to take care of that. I think the last I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, you're looking at an installation on the chiller and things like that in the fall of this year.
Our lead time on the chillers is 26 to 30 weeks.
Right, right. So, and then, you know, if we wanted to make sure the IRA incentives were met by the end of the year, obviously, we'd want everything completed at that point. So, but, you know, that's kind of the, how much can be done between now and when the chiller needs to go in on the roofing and things like that? I guess it'd be up to, you know, the roofing contractor, but they're, because obviously, in the summer, they're usually pretty tied up with schools that need to take priority. And, you know, we would need ours to slip in there right afterward, after the July-August period.
Source of payable, Dave?
Your checkbook. Kind of literally, no, this would be our reserves. I mean, right now, we are at around $33 million of reserves. This is looking at a 8 million, you know, potentially down to 7 million. So, it's something that we have to consider, would be utilizing those reserves. Now, you know, if we do move forward with any bonding, it would be eligible for reimbursements from the bonding. But, you know, at this point, I want to consider it purely reserve-funded from the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more questions, Russ?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Good information, thank you.
So, that leads us to the motion, approval of the roof and chiller project. Will someone, Sharon, you seem to be the roof expert.
That's that 30 years of insurance, but we had some questions, I think, that we were waiting on answers for. Go ahead, Dave.
Well, if you have questions, let's get those answered, but I have a suggested motion.
Okay.
I thought Marty had asked one that you wanted to get back, or it's a.
What was it? What was the question, which one are you referring to?
I had marked down, how much would we potentially save with the new chiller and that technology?
Oh, right, yeah.
I'll check with them.
I'm not sure I need that to vote, though. So, I would like to know, so we can know that answer to that for, for all of us, but.
I think $18,000 just into chemicals until we spend, so we wouldn't be spending that.
Okay.
So, that's at least one, one pack.
My question, and I don't need it answered to vote, although it is very important for us just moving forward, which is on the cybersecurity. And I do know that in many past years, there were, that's how it all got started for one company, where there was an invasion with entering in on the mechanical system. A worm got in through that. So, I want to make sure that we know that that's all taken care of and in place. But I don't need that to make a vote or a motion. But go ahead, Pete, if you have the.
Sure, so, we have some details that have to be worked out, but we have a timing issue. So, we're trying to balance both. So, this can be taken advantage of this year, when we know it's in place. It may be in place next year, but we don't know that. So, my suggested motion is that you approve the project generally, and you authorize Susan to sign any, all the contracts. There will be probably at least several contracts, subject to the review of those contracts, and, and the working out of a couple of details.
Sounds like a good motion to me. Sharon, would you want to make it?
I will make a motion. Let me flip here to this one page, because I'm going to add to your motion. I make a motion that we approve the, the contract, or the information that's presented for roof repairs with solar and cooling systems, with also granting Susan, the executive director, the ability to sign contracts and bring them back with oversight on a not-to-exceed $9 million.
Sure, of course.
Of course, thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Jim, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Posed by nay? Well, we have a roof with chiller and a solar panel sometime. Great, thank you, folks, for your presentation.
Thank you, very informative, thank you.
All the work you've done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay around for our annual report to the State Library Association. We listen to you for four hours. All right, let's go to the State Library annual report.
I will try to not make it four hours, but I do think it is very interesting. So, it seems like the past few years, I have come to you with our state report, and there's always been an asterisk by it. It's always been kind of an odd year, and that's because of COVID. In 2023, we don't have the asterisks because of COVID, but there were some oddities. Things weren't entirely normal in 2023. The big factor was that 2023 was the changeover year from our wise ILS to the Polaris ILS back in October. And that ILS is the tool used to gather most of the data for this report. And our team was extremely careful and thorough, but it's still a big challenge to pull this kind of intricate data from two dramatically different tools. Also, in the period of weeks leading up to the changeover for the ILS, you may remember we had what we called a limited services period, and that's where some circulation functions weren't available, and we also had to stop ordering new materials for a period of time. The really good news is that the staff who put all the work into pulling these statistics together from the report say that going forward, this kind of reporting is going to be significantly easier to do and much more accurate with our new ILS Polaris. I want to give a big thanks to all the staff who helped put all the work together in this report. And I also want to thank Elena for the data entry for the report, because it is laborious. Another asterisk after 2023, you may remember that a Boite was closed for four weeks this fall for roof repairs. A Boite is one of our busiest branches, and the fact that they were closed for four weeks plays a factor into. plays a factor into things like our circulation counts and program attendance. But despite all those asterisks I just told you about, we saw some truly significant gains in our key performance indicators that speak to the value of the library and the community. It speaks to the excellent service our staff provides. It speaks to the excellent programming that we plan, and also how effective our marketing department is in getting our message across to the community. The figure that I am thrilled about is that from the past year, we had a 25% increase in visits. Our visits increased from, that's visits system-wide, 1.45 million in 2022 to about 1.8 million last year. Our total circulation increased from 4.1 million to 4.286 million. That's about 5%. Our electronic materials downloaded, that increased by 16%. We are seeing just an increasing demand and popularity for eBooks and other e-materials. I found this figure very interesting, and it really speaks to how valued our library is in Allen County and how much of a reader our community is. Library Journal did a nationwide survey in 2022, and they found that the average circulation per capita for a library in the U.S., per person, is 7.86 items for your average library. But Allen County's per capita circulation last year was 11.12 items. So we are readers here in Allen County. We knew that, but the figures also show it. Our YLS internet sessions increased by 43%. We had almost 200,000 internet sessions on public computers, and that was about a 7% increase. Spending on the collection is staying stable at about 15% of our total operating cost. I say it's staying stable for us, but it's significant in that the state standard is 8% and the national average is 11%. So we are truly putting our operating budget into something the patrons can see and take home with their hands, the collection. Another incredible increase is in-person program attendance. We saw a 28% increase in attendance from the previous year. Very, very impressive. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Ultimately, we will ask for an approval for the report so we can submit it to the state. But I'm just really impressed with us, considering all of the challenges we had in 2023. So many of these figures are going in such a positive direction. It speaks to the dedication and hard work of our staff and a supportive community.
Questions?
I just have the comment, I'm just really happy to see, I feel like we have a very good system in place to take statistics and get real numbers for all these things now, which I think that's been a real improvement over the last 10 years or so.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's continued, and I really appreciate that.
Will we have this in the form of a press release or something to blow our own horn?
Oh, my goodness, Aja has like her finger hovering over the sentence. What Aja and her team are already working on is something called a Community Impact Report, which we have brought those to you in previous years. So it's a package showing the statistics in a graphical interface that makes it very attractive. So she's putting a package together with statistics as well as some great photos from the year.
Susan, I'd just like to add right here, I just kudos to you and the team because it seems like I am seeing the library everywhere. It seems like we're really, even just the, the new library card that's come out was just taken off like wildfire.
It has.
I know we've had different opportunities, but we just, I don't know. It just seems like to me that the library is in all of the right places, helping to move our mission and our, our work forward. And it's really refreshing to see how many positive things that we've been a part of in the public and in the community lately. So kudos to you and your team.
We really appreciate that. It truly is a team effort. But I do have to give a huge thanks and kudos to Aja and her team because they are incredible at getting the message out and connecting with the community. So thank you, Aja and team.
Can I have a motion?
So move, move, we approve the report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Thank you. Well done. Very well done.
Thank you.
Let's move to your report.
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce Deborah Meserve, the branch manager here at Pontiac. Thank you for hosting us here today, Deborah. And after the close of regular session, she would be happy to give anybody interested a brief tour of Pontiac before executive session starts. I wanted to congratulate Beth Boatright here today. She was awarded a 40 under 40 honor from Fort Wayne Business Weekly. So she was chosen from a pool of over 200 nominations, and she will be honored at an event next month. So congratulations, Beth. The AARP Foundation is providing free in-person tax assistance and preparation. They started in January, and they go through April 15th at nine ACPL locations. They include help on some Saturdays, which is very popular, and it continues to be an extremely appreciated service year after year. We have had a great month celebrating Black History with system-wide programming, including scavenger hunts, film screenings, free community breakfasts. Some occurred right here in this room. Book discussions and art activities, and you may have seen in the Journal Gazette and on Wayne recently. This week, we had a great photo opportunity. We had our Rosa Parks Art Library Card made by Theopla Smith. We had a picture of that in front of the Rosa Parks CityLink bus. So I love that synergy there. That was wonderful. And Theoplas was able to be there for that photo, as well as members of our staff. Another really exciting announcement, I had mentioned in previous meetings about the collaboration that our library foundation is doing with the Questa Education Foundation to provide forgivable loans for our employees earning a Masters of Library Science degree. We had our first application process, and we awarded two staff members. Shakira Smith, who is at our Hessen Castle branch, and Gabby Jaregui, who is at our Shawnee branch. They were selected as our first ACPL scholars. So they will receive 100% forgivable loans for earning their Masters of Library Science degrees. And they are ecstatic. There were tears when they were given that news. So this is truly life-changing money and opportunities for people. So it was, it's thrilling. And the library foundation has committed to do more of these in future years. So we're just really grateful for the partnership. We mentioned the runaway success of the new library cards. I believe we're doing about double our normal business in library card applications. So kudos to everybody involved. It's been a big hit. A few things that have come up since I typed this report. We've had, speaking of transformative amounts of money, we've had a very, very generous gift to the Genealogy Center from the estate of a Mr. John J. Newman. And Kurt knew Mr. Newman well. Mr. Newman was previously the Director of Information Management Services at the Indiana Supreme Court. And he also previously served as Indiana State Archivist. And Kurt served with him on numerous boards involving genealogy and local history. Mr. Newman was a huge supporter and fan of our Genealogy Center. He did pass in October of last year, and is, in his estate, he left the Genealogy Center $20,000. And we have sent our thanks and appreciation to the family via his attorney. And we will also be putting his name on our door wall in the great hall of the main library. So a big thanks to the family of Mr. Newman. I also wanted to share that our DuPont Roof Project has been going on these past few weeks, and I want to thank the staff and the patrons for their patience. We did have somebody go out and check air quality there, and air quality was safe. But just because it's safe doesn't mean it's not occasionally unpleasant. That work sometimes associated with noise and smells, and our staff has been troopers through the whole thing. We've been able to remain open for now. But however, next week, because of where the crew will be working in the building, they will be over the entrance and in the staff area. We will need to close for four days. It would be next Wednesday, the 28th, through Saturday, March 2nd. The building would need to be closed to the public. However, we would still have access to the meeting room, so our staff would still be able to do curbside service. So we tried to mitigate the impact to the public as much as we can, but our contractors are telling us that it would just not be safe to have the public in the building those four days. So we will get the word out ASAP, and again, we will still be able to do curbside service.
Are we doing anything at DuPont? Somebody asked me for having like boxes out for people to pick up material or anything like that?
Well, we have curbside there.
Yeah, curb, but it'd be like 24-hour access.
Oh, yes, yes, the lockers, the lockers.
The lockers, that's, yeah.
They are installed, and Tanya, do we have an ETA on when those might be operational?
March 11th is our plan.
March 11th?
Okay, all right, all right.
Unfortunately, not quite soon enough, but we're, we're getting there.
Can you explain what those are exactly? How do they work?
Yeah, so patrons place a hold on an item, they request the pickup location, just like any other. So there'll be like a branch location. So I say I want to pick them up in the hold's lockers. I can go on Sunday, Monday, 2:00 in the morning. You can go anytime. You scan your library card, the locker will pop open. Your items will be checked out. It's that simple.
Okay, so you got to say you want it in the 24-hour.
Yep. You choose that as a pickup location. And then staff, when they have the holds ready, they put them in the locker, and then you'll get notified.
How many lockers are there going to be? Like, what's the limit?
It's like 50? I thought it was 50.
Around 50.
Okay.
Yeah, plus or minus a few.
Just curious. Perfect.
How does that work if Marty wants a book at 12 this period, and I and David, how does it know which book, or do you just take your book, or?
Those individual lockers, that's what I mean.
Individual?
Whatever you're doing is in that box. It's for you, only you.
So it's a piece of equipment with a lot of slots?
Yeah, almost like little safe deposit boxes.
So we manually put the books in the safe deposit box for whatever you put on hold?
Yes.
And then you pick the book up out of the locker?
I see.
Yes, and our pilot is at DuPont, but this has potential to go out in community locations that are not a branch necessarily, like at Electric Works, for example, or other places.
It's kind of the in thing. I know Amazon kind of broke the ice on that.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I believe Aja and team are working on a decorative wrap for the lockers, so. Yeah, I think right now they're kind of an institutional beige, but eventually they will be very, very attractive, yes.
Any other questions about the executive director's report? How about public comment? Anybody from the public hang around for a roof exercise?
Anybody online?
Is anybody on, on the air, any?
Well, we have people watching, no comments.
Well, thank them for watching. All right, well, if there's nothing else to discuss, let's have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Or nay, we are adjourned. We have an executive session following this meeting.
We do, and if anyone would like a brief tour of Pontiac, I know Deborah would.